Updates and new information. Phil, could we have a roll call?
Certainly Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
Secretary Zier, Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Blaney.
Present.
We are all here, ready to go.
Great, can you please join in for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
We have three public hearings this evening. We have applicants and members of the public standing in by Zoom. Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will be muting and holding the speakers in a virtual waiting room. Until it's their time to give testimony before the board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking. Should state their name and address for the record. A further reminder that despite the Zoom environment, all comments should be directed to the board. And not to the other participants. The link to participate in this meeting on Zoom can be found on the town's website. This meeting is also being live streamed on the town's website on the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal. If you're having difficulty accessing the meeting, please visit. The Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Public comments can be made via Zoom. By email. Or by uploading them to the Town Clerk's Portal on the Planning Board page. You will see on that page a button you can click to upload your comments. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record. And will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of the hearing. These applications will remain open for written comments. From the applicant and the public for 30 days. Those comments can also be made by email or by uploading your comments. On the Town Clerk's Portal. Under the Planning Board Meeting. Additionally, in accordance with the Governor's Orders. This meeting will be recorded and transcribed at a later date. And will be made available to the public. We are going to take the public hearings, not in the order they're printed. We're going to start with Oceanside. Then go to Homeland Towers. And we'll end with Staheki. For all those people who are here for Staheki. And we see quite a few participants. We're going to ask that you keep your comments. To three minutes timed, a timed period. And please, if someone before you has said exactly what you would like to say. Please don't repeat that, so, so we can have an orderly. And informative meeting, and I thank you for that. So let us start with Oceanside map number 406. Is there a notice, proper notice?
Yes, proper notice, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is Jackie Fenland, this is yours?
Yes.
Okay, I will read the notice now. Please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order number 202.1. A public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, November 12, 2020. At 6:00 PM via video conferencing. To consider the old file map application entitled Oceanside Map 406. The applicant proposes to create five separate development parcels with an average development parcel size. Of 51,901 square feet in size. Said map is situated in the CR40 zoning district. The old file map overlay district is in, and is located north of Montauk Highway, west of Peters Lane. And east of Jeffrey Lane in the hamlet of Quayog. Suffolk County Tax Route number 900-359-1-22.1, 26.1. And Suffolk County Tax Route number 900-359-2, 8.1, 9.1, and 10.1. And a transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date. And the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments.
Jackie, before, before you start, I, I just reviewing the chat. You may want to clarify that 12:05. Major's Path will be heard tonight. It seems a little confusing on the chat. There were some people asking if it's going to be postponed. So.
Um, Dennis, I responded to that. I said that it's not postponed, but continued until another date.
But we, we will be opening it tonight.
Correct.
That might be the confusion, in other words. We will open the hearing tonight. Take testimony and then it'll be continued under further date. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. Jackie, who's representing Oceanside?
Uh, it's Joe Gaza.
Is he here?
Uh, he should be. And Blair Gaza also should be there. Possibly.
So.
It's Blair.
There's Blair.
Oh, oh, there we go.
Okay, great, it's, you're on. If you can give us a brief overview, Joe and Blair. On Oceanside.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Joseph Frederick Gaza. I reside at Five Ogden Lane in Quag. I'm the owner of a six acre parcel. Of old filed map lots. Which is, as Jackie explained, situated in the hamlet of Quayog. Between the Jeffrey Lane on the west. And the Peters Lane on the east. It's sort of bisected north and south by a creek known as the Aspetuck Creek. And this property is in a one acre residential zone. As well as my neighbors on each side. So because it's an old filed map, which was created back in, I think, 1905. It gets special review by the Planning Board under special zoning provisions. So that we can create more better shaped lots with proper setbacks. Proper yards. And of course, protection of the environment, especially the Aspetuck Creek.
Joe, would you like me to share the aerials and maps?
Yes, there's, there's two maps that would really be helpful. We'll try to work together, Jackie, where they. Can they be put up on the screen for the other members to see or?
Yeah, I'm trying to work on it.
Okay. Jackie has been, oh, here we go. Let's see.
So this is the aerial.
All right, I have, I don't have the ability to point out, but. How about the other maps, Jackie, that I've provided you, that I had it highlighted? You know, that one, okay, here we go. That's, uh, that's sort of the best one for me to go by.
Sure.
Can we turn it a little bit so? Okay. Oh, perfect, okay. As, as shown in. Oh, there we go, as, as shown in pink, green, yellow, and blue. That's all the six acres of the Gaza property. It's outlined in red. For the development parcels. Let me, let me start by saying that I had to secure the blue, which is an access. Way to get into the property. To the Peters Lane. Via a 30 foot right of way. I secured that from Mr. Nukewitz, who was. Just to the north of the right of way. He has a little over an acre and a tenth of property. And Mr. Nukewitz and I have reached an agreement. Where he's going to be receiving lot number one. Which is on the north end of my subdivision map. In exchange for the permission to use the 30 foot right of way. To give access to my five proposed lots. The access to this map used to be to Jeffrey Lane, but we lost that access with the, the filing of the map of. Oakland Park, I think it was. Yeah. That Mr. Tadaldi did. And then the access to the north, the Kathy's Way. That access became obstructed by Conservation Department and. Resulting in my property being best served with the 30 foot access route. Through Mr. Nukewitz's property. It's going to be a private road, 18 foot of asphalt paving. There will be all underground utilities, telephone, internet. Electricity. And I am proposing to extend public water, so that each lot has a public water supply. There is public water on Peters Lane. Additionally, the, the lands to the. West, let's talk about the lands to the west. The, the pink lands that you can see. I'm proposing to outright deed to the town. Deed to the town, so that there's a connection. With the land that the town owns to the north. As well as the, what the town owns to the south. It will connect the Montauk Highway. All the way up towards, almost to the railroad tracks with town owned property. And now, let's see.
Hi, Joe. I'm trying to show the aerial.
Okay. Basically, the, the, the wetland area, which is the, on the both sides of the Aspetuck Creek. Is shown in blue. On the map which Jackie has. Up before you. And I, I want to deed that land right to the town. It's not buildable land. It, it should become town owned. I've offered it to the town trustees already. They expressed interest, but I guess it doesn't matter which town agency obtains the land. But we want to keep that land in, in town ownership for the protection of the Aspetuck Creek. What I am proposing is to develop with my residential lots. The land to the. East. And east of the creek. There's a buffer zone that's going to be. Protected with conservation easement. Which is approximately 200 feet wide. It's shown in green on the, the map that's before you right now. So that the result will be that four acres of my property out of six or 70%. Will be forever preserved. Either municipally owned or covered with conservation easement, so that. It cannot be disturbed in any manner. And vegetation will remain. The soils will remain intact and it will be a buffer. Of the Aspetuck Creek and the wetland area. That's being deeded to the town. The, the area is shown in yellow towards the. East of my proposed five lot little development. Those are the building envelopes. Where the, the house. The garage and possibly a small swimming pool, not much room for it on lots. Two, three, four, and five, but there's adequate room for a pool and a house on lot number one. But there'll be a suitable building envelope for a, a, a nice home. And coming in off of a private road with all utilities underground. I anticipate that my lots. Will probably bring in the neighborhood of about $400,000. 375, 400 each. As a finished lot. Now that's a little lighter than the lots on Jeffrey Lane to the west. Where homes are selling. House and lot is selling in the million dollar range. But it's definitely upscale from the lots. And homes to the east of, of Peters Lane. Where homes are in the three to $400,000 range, but hopefully going up. And my little development or my five lots are going to make those homes go up in value. Because the, any person who purchases. My lot will be having a beautiful view of the protected lands of the Aspetuck Creek. Even though it's a couple hundred feet. You know, away from their home, that's, it's okay. It have protected area. And wooded and it's, it's going to look very nice. So I'm hoping to find buyers for these lots once that the. Approval process has been completed. And I should mention that. I did offer my land in its entirety to the Community Preservation Department of the Town of Southampton. I haven't really had a chance to sit down with Lisa Combrick. I've called a few times and I provided her with maps. Maybe. Community Preservation may not have this on their radar because. The, the land that they want to protect. Is being protected. It's either going to be deeded to the town, the, the red portion, or protected for the town, the green portion. So the area that, that Community Preservation is most interested in. Is going to be protected. At no cost to the town at all. And they could use their funds for. Other purchases with, you know, in other areas of the town. I'm trying to do the right thing with this property. I've owned it for eight years. I am. Winding down on property acquisitions and I would like to complete this. As part of a little package thing I have going on with some other properties where I'm. Trying to wind up some of my affairs on, on vacant lands. And I want to do the right thing and I, I think that the proposal that I have before the Planning Board. Is going to be, it's going to be important for the area. It's going to bring the area up in value on Peters Lane. And we're going to do a nice, nice job back there. And I think that the, the homes will be attractive. And the, the clientele will be upscale. And it's what I would like to see. Bring up this area a little bit. Some of the neighbors may be appearing this evening before you discussing this. They might have had a few issues with me because. I had to do a lot of cleaning up on the property. Result of debris that was dumped on the land. And I, I did remove two 30 yard roll offs of debris. But the property is now pristine clean. And Jacqueline Fenland actually walked the property in its entirety with me. About a month ago, or three weeks ago, when. We looked everything over and we looked to make sure it was. Clean as a whistle and all the vegetation, all the live vegetation is growing, is thriving. It looks nice and I want to do a nice job there. So that's, that's basically my. My pitch before the board. Thank you for taking the opportunity to, let me give you my pitch.
Thank you, Joe. Jackie, are there any questions from the board?
Uh, well, I have, if there's questions from the board, you may ask them. I do have applicants that have registered to speak.
Quick question for Joe, who's going to, on the right of way, Joe?
Mr. Nukewitz owns the 30 foot. Blue from Peters Lane to where the red lines begin. Right, yeah, right to there. And the other remaining portion of the right of way will be owned in front of each lot. Each lot owner will own the right of way and everyone will have a common easement. Over the, the right of way in its entirety. So that the five lots which will be created. Will all have a one fifth share. In the maintenance upkeep. And use of the right of way in its entirety.
You're not proposing a, a road dedication or anything?
No, it's, we're keeping it a private road. You know, Mr. Nukewitz does not want a big road next to his property. He has a home there and a. Another building. He just wanted a, a private tasteful road. We are going to be planting. Green giant evergreen trees to screen it. And as I mentioned, it's, it's going to start out 18 feet of blacktop and narrow, actually narrowed down when it gets near the south end of the road. You can see it gets a little narrower. It's, it's, it's only for the, the five lots. And I, I don't think we need a private, you know, anything more than a little private road to satisfy this. This little group of homes.
Now, what's the, the square footage of the, the lots that are going to be built on? Clearly, one is a lot larger. But you know, this is one acre zoning, so what are we actually going to have?
Well, if, if we look at the red lines.
Sorry, I was trying to zoom in.
Okay, see the red lines?
Yeah, no, I, I just, I. If you could, I, I can't read the numbers.
Okay, they're a minimum of 40,000 square feet each.
Yeah, they are still.
Yeah, and the red area, the pink area. What I've done, I've, since it's one acre zoning, I made the lots one acre each. And I took the excess land. And I'm deeding that to the town. That's the pink land.
Gloria, and this is the. Sizes.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, those numbers are too small for me to read. So, but.
Can you see the map?
He has it, my question, it's, it's, it's still, it's, we're not doing undersized lots.
Oh, no, we're, we're definitely not.
That's, that was, that's where, because I, it was hard to tell from, from the map itself. That's all I.
Lauren, if you'd like, I could read them very quickly.
That's, no, that's fine.
Okay.
I, I, maybe I could just mention that it is one acre zoning, but almost all the lots on Peters Lane. Are half acre lots or less, with the exception of the Nukewitz lot, which is a little over an acre. But everybody else has a lot that's either 75 or 80 feet wide by 236 feet deep. Which makes them about a half acre each. So I'll be one acre lots in an, in an area that's mostly half acre lots as neighbors to the. East.
Thank you, that's my question.
Thank you.
Can we let the public in now? Jackie, you want to call some people?
Uh, sure. So the first registered speaker I have is Regina Moynihan of 11 Peters Lane.
Can you say that again, please?
Regina Moynihan. 11 Peters Lane. Last name spelling is M-O-Y-N-I-H-A-N. And then her husband is also registered, which I believe is Kevin Moynihan, also 11 Peters Lane.
Her email is Regina McGuire at Gmail, if that helps, Charles.
That does help a lot.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you just give your name for the reference?
I'm Regina McGuire Moynihan. I currently reside at 11 Peters Lane in Quayog. I've owned a home here for the past 17 years. With my husband and our son is currently a junior at West Hampton High School. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the Planning Board. For opening the dialogue to those of us who live on Peters Lane. And the surrounding streets that would be immensely impacted by the plan that has been put forth by Mr. Gaza. My first comment is to ask the Planning Board to not open the old filed, filed map. That, that's being requested. It predates modern zoning. And the old filed maps were most probably not approved by the original Planning Board. The property under review is wetlands and considered wasteland by the town. And what are, what's to say that these are now considered viable to be built on? And as they're deemed partially wet wastelands, how much development can realistically occur? When you look at those lots, as you pointed out, you asked. Are they, they're one acre lots? And Mr. Gaza pointed out that they were all over 40,000 square feet, but the actual dwelling and. Habitation part is not, because part of that is wetlands. That was noted in the green. So you know, Mr. Gaza knew full well that when he purchased his land. That it was landlocked and it was substandard property. He actively went after multiple people in the neighborhood trying to get an easement. The list of items that would be nonconforming to our neighborhood are significant. There are no access roads currently behind any series of homes in, anywhere in our area. The properties all have a, all have a minimum square footage. And, and the proposed development won't conform to the actual living space that the, that the neighborhood doesn't, does currently have. Additionally, all roads. That are, are approved by the town are 50 feet versus the 30 feet that Mr. Gaza is proposing. The other consideration that's of great concern is the environment. We are at the emergence of greenwashing and all things in, in the United States and globally. It's going to change all of our behaviors as we move forward. We're in a world that is now realizing that we need to save our ecosystems because they're so important. Biggsbox retailers are working for zero carbon footprints. And consumer companies are moving their products to be Credo certified and FSC certified, which is huge. The disruption of wildlife that will happen is immense. It's already started to occur. You know, and to the wetlands. And the, the concern I have also is with the home use of pesticide runoff into the water tributary. And the greater impact that that will have to our environmental. Impact on the waters, which are so key and dear to all of us that live out here. Also, the majority of the land has been already purchased. There will be increased traffic on the street and I think that's a concern for everybody here. There's a lot of traffic as there is right now. And you know, I can speak as a homeowner, I'm deemed in a flood wetland. I'm insured by the state because no insurance company will carry us. So how are you going to propose to build homes that will have further implications of nonability to be insured? So, thank you so much for letting me speak. I appreciate it. We're asking you not to allow this to happen. We would really like preservation to happen for the entire parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, can you? The next speaker?
Yes, the next speaker was Kevin Moynihan, also 11 Peters Lane.
Charles, can you let Kevin Moynihan in?
60 people takes a second.
No, I don't, thank you.
Charles, do you need the email? It's kmoyn01@al.com.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moynihan?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I don't know, I'm, I'm, I can't see myself, so. I'm not very technologically savvy here, so bear with me. I have a statement here, so I'm going to be reading as. It's easier so that I don't stray. With my comments. My name is Kevin Moynihan and I reside at 11 Peters Lane in Quayog. I've been here for, I've been here for 17 years. And I'm participating in this Planning Board hearing. Because I strongly oppose the development of any land that is a part of the area involving the Aspetuck Creek area and. And any and all land adjacent to it. A vast majority of this property has been deemed wetlands and part has. And parts have been deemed wasteland by the Town of Southampton, Suffolk County, and the D E C. It has been attempted numerous times in the past to be developed. And has been met with opposition and stoppage for over 25 years. What appears to be the purpose of this meeting this evening is to attempt to open an old field map on file to develop part of this area. I'm not sure what map that, that it is being requested. Some of the comments that I'm going to be making now are pre Mr. Gaza presenting himself, so. Bear with that, but I'm not, I, I'm not sure what the map was. The research that I came up with dated back to the late 1990s, 2002, and another one in. Of 10 years ago. I did not realize he was going back to 1905, which would probably eliminate any and all environmental. Codes and guidelines by today's standards, according to what he said. If the 1905 number is correct, that's beyond ridiculous. Mr. Gaza, who was proposing the development, purchased his property by my records a little over seven years ago. He bought landlocked property deemed wasteland or wetlands at that time and is now trying to circumvent. The system by dialing back the clock to get development rights. He bought the property sight unseen, according to his own words. Not researching anything about the property and now he wants to use maps that predate his purchase of the land. So that he can change current laws that are in effect. He's attempting to change usage of wetlands and wasteland property. This cannot be accepted by the town. I find it quite disturbing, actually, that is, that it's even being taken under consideration. It shows a lack of judgment on government. It really does. I cannot and should not be, it, it cannot and should not be considered for any possible development in any way, shape, or form. The map predates modern zoning and was more than likely made prior to there being a Planning Board. Approval needed for that map. Obviously, in 1905, that's the case. Besides the environmental impact it will have on wildlife and marine life, it will have a financial impact on the homes in the surrounding area. All the homes on Peters Lane, which have been there for over a half a century or longer, are on plots. Of land that supersede the size of the proposal Mr. Gaza has. Now, the proposal that he does have put forward. Now, the proposal that he does have put forward, the way the strips of land goes, it says the buildings are in the yellow in that thing, and the green land is property that will be owned by the homeowner that goes down and incorporates what is called the Aspatuck Creek, which I'll get back to. Let me get back to my thing, which has been there for ever century, and plots of land supersede the size of Mr. Gaza that Gaza has put forward, making them nonconforming with what has been here for decades. And to bring the Bridle Path area into the equation, which is the border on the west side of the land, it would be shameful to make a comparison on the lot sizes and the values of those homes in comparison to what's being built, regardless of what he says. Even the more modest homes on Peters Lane will be depreciated in any form, with any form of development. Putting a road behind a series of any homes would depreciate the value and is not consistent with any local codes in the area. There are no roads behind backyards in any surrounding neighborhoods. The easement aspect of it brings into question the access that was granted to him to reach his landlocked property also seems substandard because he claims that what was offered is thirty feet. You need fifty feet to put a road in. He just said that he's not going to put a road in. But in any way, shape, or form, taking the easement or a road is going to depreciate the surrounding properties. It will increase traffic and make it unsafe on an already busy dead-end street. The property that gave the rights to Mr. Gaza, I don't know how to pronounce the guy's last name, begins with an N, but he has some pre-existing rights based upon what was built on it, pre-existing nonconforming use of the property and the building. I have questions that don't need to be answered, obviously, today, but, you know, does that property lose its pre-existing rights once they start deeding part of the land to other people? Because that's a question that needs to be answered. Because what was on that property that Mr. Gaza got the rights for the easement was a hotel many years ago, and I'm well-versed in the terms "pre-existing nonconforming use" in the town of Southampton. And in deeding property and changing that conformity, does that person lose those pre-existing nonconforming use rights? I also want to address the picture that Mr. Gaza painted in letters to the town about the neighbors of Peter Lane, Peters Lane. He made them sound like deplorable people who don't deserve to enjoy the open-air wilderness that the wetland area provides. And those were his words, which he wrote down in letters to the town. He made accusations that neighbors have thrown massive amounts of garbage and debris into those wetlands areas. Like I said earlier, I've been here for seventeen years. And I will say that with one hundred percent conviction, in the seventeen years that I've been here, nobody's thrown garbage in that area. There is garbage back there, but that predates anybody that lives in this area. And I'm one of the older residents, we're in this direct area of seventeen years. Everybody else is probably five or ten years. And I will tell you that what has been found in that... I found a Schaefer beer can that had a pull top on it. They haven't made cans like that since nineteen eighty. So his comments to make people in the area, you know, not appreciating the property itself and that he's in a position to make it better and that we don't deserve it is beyond irresponsible. And I take offense to what his comments were. I have two... Let me just wrap it up here. He actually made comments in those statements that he wanted people to present themselves tonight under oath so that he can confront them and ask them about who was throwing this stuff on the property. The last thing I want to address is the town's actions over the years as a whole. According to the records that I could find, the town bought eight parcels of land that are just north, just north, and literally are bordering the parcels that Mr. Gaza is looking to develop. According to the records that I could find, they bought them in August of twenty eleven. All right, that's two years before Mr. Gaza had bought his property. The property that Mr. Gaza bought is in a clearly more environmentally sound zone than the eight parcels the town bought two years prior, yet they failed to purchase those two lots, those lots that Mr. Gaza bought two years earlier. I'm not sure why, but I'm going to find out that answer because it's very puzzling to me that Mr. Gaza was able to walk in, two years after the town bought eight parcels of land for over a million dollars, and did not purchase this particular property, which is way more environmentally sensitive than what they bought. Suffolk County owns property back there. Mr. Gaza deeded sometime on January twenty-second, twenty fifteen, he donated like what appears to be like a ten-by-ten piece of property that subsequently the Suffolk County has gotten. I have it on reports from the Preservation Fund, okay? I'm not a hundred percent sure why the town did not buy the property at the time that they did. But... The best scenario here is for the Preservation Fund is to buy this property. What can't be done here is to open up old maps to circumvent present laws and restrictions that will allow a bartering to happen between Mr. Gaza and the town.
Mr. Moynihan?
He bought pre-existing property that was landlocked, sight unseen, and is now trying to open maps so that it benefits him on the development of it. And in what he showed on his development where the homes are and strips of land going down, I find it actually irresponsible by you guys to have a pencil-thin blue line running through that piece of property and on maps when it clearly is fifty to sixty feet width in the beginning of it and is at least ten feet wide throughout it. And that doesn't even include the dead trees that are part of what that creek is that does get filled at times when there's heavy rain and whatever, or storm surges that occur.
Mr. Moynihan, we have a lot of people tonight at this public hearing, so I can ask you to wrap it up, and you could certainly send your comments to the planning board that you have written out, so that would be helpful.
Well, I've spoken to Marty Shay in The Environmentalist, and the environmental thing about this, that he is going to possibly propose that this is put in front of the preservation's desk. This can't be developed in any way, shape, or form. And I find it actually offensive that a neighbor of mine, two stores down, went and cut trees down recently to put a patio in his backyard next spring. And he went through the protocol and was told by the Environmental Division in the town of Southampton that he could only cut down to a certain part, cut down a certain part of trees on his own property that clearly is two hundred and fifty feet further in from where this proposed thing is to be built.
Okay, I don't want to cut you off, but...
Please do.
Please, because it's... So submit your comments, and we appreciate that. Jackie, is there someone else who is speaking here?
Yes, there is an Irma Eagleton, nine Peters Lane.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Irma Eagleton. My address is nine Peters Lane in Quayog, West Hampton Beach. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and be heard as a neighbor in a beautiful neighborhood, which is fine exactly as it is. It conforms to the existing map that the town uses to allow development, and it's very rigid in terms of what a person can and cannot do. I know that. I just bought here. I've been living here a year. I enjoy the beautiful trees, the wildlife, the turkey, the turtles, the deer. I enjoy all that. I look at those beautiful trees Mr. Gaza described. And if you grant what he is asking for you, my property will be devalued. It will be devalued because I don't have that view. And I bought in a neighborhood that conforms to what the town wants. It is a standard neighborhood, which is beautiful. It does not have rights-of-way easements on substandard streets to allow access to a whole new area with streets behind houses that people paid money for to live in this beautiful area. I would urge you, and I please, do not open up this old filed map. It does not make sense. It's old. And why don't we use it? Because we have an updated one that conforms to what modern expectations are, modern things, like why we protect wetlands, why it's important to have a water shed protected, why it's important to not develop and have setbacks, and to not have septic run into waters, and to not have fertilizers from those five houses or whatever he proposes in back there to run off. And I encourage you to not open that field map. What he is asking you to do does not make sense. It takes us way back. It takes us to a point where, on the street that I live on, it's very, very busy. You're adding five more homes to it and a side area, and it already is very busy. It's a very dangerous intersection at the end there. I am on the very end of it. I looked at Mr. Gaza's map. To me, that did not make sense. I could not find where my property was. It seems like my property starts where the first map he showed up. I'm challenging that. And I'm also challenging the way he did his figurations on how he proposed. The two largest properties, if you look at what he's asking, are twenty-two point one and twenty-six point two. They are listed as wastelands. And why are they that? Because that's what they are. They're protected. And I would urge you to keep it that way. He bought it that way. That's what it is. And when the other subdivisions, which you allow to use the old field map, when they did their calculations, it's very different from what Mr. Gaza is doing, they basically had to take the deduction and then subtract the wetlands and then make figures from there. I don't know if what he is proposing actually subtracts the wetlands. And I would urge you to look at the calculations.
Can I just encourage you to please wrap it up? We have sixty people in the hearing tonight.
Sure. I would ask, number one, P C F, please, buy him out, buy the wastelands. If it is you're going to reassess them and revalue them, he has paid taxes on wastelands for years, and that's what they are. And if you're going to reevaluate it, then perhaps you should look at why it was taxed that way in the first place. And finally, there's a lot of environmental issues here. I truly believe he needs to set forth an environmental study that will... Because there's wetlands every here. There's protected property left and right. Why? Because it needs to be protected. So he should provide something to indicate some type of study as to the impact of what he is proposing. I would urge you to let him devalue our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, is that it?
That was all I had that registered prior.
Okay, so...
Yeah, there might be some that didn't register ahead of time.
Is it for this application?
Yes.
Okay, if you can give us a name.
You can see the hands on the list.
I'll leave it up to the planners to call various people.
It's hard for me to see who's raising hands. I'm sorry. I don't know if I have that capability.
Yeah, I can't see it.
Christopher O'Hara, I'm just making a request that people please keep their comments brief. And if something's already been stated, to not restate it. It's on the record, and we have the information. Mr. O'Hara, are you speaking next?
Yes, that would be great. Good evening. How are you? And thank you for your time. And in consideration of your time this evening, I think that Kevin Moynihan and Regina and Irma have very clearly stated what I would like to state on the record. So in consideration of your time and your effort this evening, I just want to endorse their comments. I'm a resident at eleven Bridle Path in West Hampton Beach, and thank you very much again. I'm good.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your consideration. Someone else there?
I am letting him in.
Mr. Simonson? He's muted.
You need to unmute yourself, sir.
Can you hear us? Okay.
He's on. I think he's here for number three, Madam Chair.
Okay, he's not on for this. Anyone else for this application for Oceanside?
Does Carlos Figueroa want to be heard, sir? I saw you chat in the...
Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Carlos Figueroa. I'm from twenty-one Peters Lane. Just for reference, I've been there since two thousand and one. This is... I'll keep it very brief for you guys as well. I do agree with the preceding comments from all the other residents that live there. One of the roads that is proposed in the blue line would run next to my property and also behind. I do not think that would necessarily increase the value of my residence. I think that would actually decrease it. I agree with everything that was mentioned before. I do agree that there'd be more traffic, more commotion, something that I don't think is a good idea. I just wanted to keep it brief. Just wanted to let you know my comments. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. Is there a...
There seems to be a Ruthie and Stanley in one of the questions.
There's also like a Neil and an Enric Ringwald.
We have Carissa up. We have several people up now. We have to just manage this in a better way.
It's very helpful if people register to speak prior to the hearing on the town clerk's meeting portal.
Right.
We're just doing it now, so I apologize for not registering. Do I have time now?
Keep it brief. You're on for Oceanside?
And please introduce yourself.
I'm sorry?
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, gotcha. I'm Dan Hartman. This is my wife, Carissa Hartman. We're probably the most impacted by this. We live at fifteen Peters. So all these houses are proposed to be directly behind us. Two young kids. Don't want the increased traffic in the area. I enjoy the woods behind us. I enjoy the wildlife. I really don't want the impact of the environment to be destroyed. Again, we bought that property in two thousand and eleven. We've been there for almost ten years. Again, as a consideration, you guys have given a board for declining that, possibly purchasing that land for community preservation. It would be greatly appreciated by both my wife and I.
And our children as well. And again, everything Regina and Kevin have already touched on, we greatly agree with. And in the interest of time, we'll allow somebody else to speak now. Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Who is next here? Someone else want to speak to Stephen Langer? Are you here for Oceanside?
Yes, yes, I am. I live at... My name is Steve Langer. I live at twenty-seven Jeffrey Lane. I've been here for about six years. When I purchased the property, both brokers who I dealt with, we were told that our backyard was never going to be developed. I have a current easement onto my property that has the deer and the turkey go behind it. My grandchildren come, and they love seeing the deer. And I believe that if they open up this old map and Mr. Gaza builds these additional houses, it will definitely negatively impact not only my property, but everybody's. but everybody who's on Jeffrey Lane. And uh, what, what's, what I also think about is uh, my neighbors, uh, both sides have recent, have sold the property several times. And every time that property is sold, uh, there's making fifteen to twenty thousand dollar donate, donations to the uh, preservation fund. And I tell people, it's a great thing that, that uh, that when I, I paid over a million dollars for my property, my next door neighbors each paid over a million dollars. So uh, we, we feel like uh, Mr. Gaza is coming in. He, he bought a landlocked property and now he's trying to just destroy uh, the property values for his own, for his own good. And uh, everything that has been said by um, uh, by Ms. McGuire, I, and uh, I, I just really think that this should be a no-go. No question about it. Uh, and that's my, my, that's my say. And I'm sure that my, my friend, my neighbors all would agree with me.
Okay. Eric Ringwald?
Yes. Uh, I'll be very brief, uh, because I don't want to pile on. My name is Eric Ringwald, I live at twenty-five Jeffrey Lane, uh, neighbors with Steve. Uh, hi Steve. Um, I would agree that uh, everything that I've heard tonight about what Mr. Gaza is planning to do is not particularly consistent with the neighborhood, with the uh, appreciation of the wetlands in the area and the sensitive environmental nature. I think a thirty-foot easement into uh, other people's properties in order to gain access to the four land-like properties is going to change the character of the neighborhood immensely. Uh, so I don't suggest, I, I would like to see you not support the, the proposal that's been put forward tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there someone else here? What, what, wanting to speak? You're on mute. Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Hi, um, we're neighbors. I'm Ruth Ann Stanley from twenty-three Jeffrey Lane. Um, I'm very concerned about the wetlands. I'm concerned if there's flooding, where is that water going to go? It's a very sensitive area. And that area behind my house, it's not that big. You're going to hear these homes, you're going to see them through the woods. It's going to devalue my property tremendously. I'm very concerned. I would not want this to go forward. And here's my neighbor Neil.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, we're, we're sharing Zoom here. I'm at, this is Neil Rosenthal, I'm at, I'm also on Jeffrey Lane. Uh, I must say, when I heard Mr. Gaza speak, I thought he um, presented his self-interest in a very persuasive way uh, with uh, seeming due consideration of the uh, environmental impact that what he was proposing would uh, impose upon the neighborhood. However, looking at the property and seeing how, actually how small it is, uh, and that it is uh, transected by a river which is important to this uh, area environmentally, I must say that um, I would be very opposed to what he's proposing. I would also be curious to know how he determined um, what part of each of those parcels he was um, demarcating um, as being uh, a section that would not be developed? Was that done just uh, haphazardly with, with general uh, uh, with, with sort of a general understanding of how much space there should be between a river and development? Or has he already done the environmental impact study and is being directed uh, in, in his proposal by uh, the, the people who are knowledgeable about these things? But just having looked at the property itself, I will say it's a very small area. Uh, and I think it would be uh, environmentally uh, impactful in a very negative way. That is my major concern. Uh, my property is not directly uh, attached to it. Uh, uh, so I think there's less concern of, for most of us on Jeffrey, but not for the properties on Jeffrey Lane, which um, directly um, uh, back onto this property evolved. Uh, and uh, I'm very concerned about my neighbors uh, stated concerns about devaluing their property. Unlike what he said, that it would increase the value of the area, I think it would decrease the value of the area. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank, thank you very much.
Well, what was your address, sir? Sorry.
Three Jeffrey Lane.
Thank you.
I don't think there are any more people in this, in this room. So I'll ask you to submit your comments to the planning board in writing. We have to move on.
I want to.
Excuse me? Um. Any comments from the planning board or shall? Mr. Gaza, do you want to make any kind of closing comment? Please keep it brief. We have a, a very heavy schedule tonight, please. Unless you'll.
Thank you. Um, I have no further comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, um. Hearing, shall we keep this open?
Yes, thirty, thirty days, Madam Chair, is the recommendation.
Okay, so where, where will that, where does that bring us?
Uh, do you mean to adjourn it to a new?
Oh, written comment period, sorry, yeah. Closing with a written comment period for thirty days?
You have thirty days for written comments. I'm turning it off.
Motion?
Motion.
By Dennis, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor? Pose, extension, so thirty-day written comment period. Thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Homeland Towers Watermill.
Don't run away, don't run away. What's that, sound good, the meeting?
Yeah. You're done meeting? You can mute your microphone?
Okay, but mute.
So, to clarify, you have thirty-day written comment period. All of your comments can be written and sent to the planning board and they will be read and put into the record. Okay, so we're moving on to Homeland Towers Watermill. Claire?
If I may, Madam Chair, we have proper notice.
Okay.
Great. Um, if you could let Robert Guardioso in, um, Charles, it's RG is the initials. And then I'll read the notice into the paper, into the record. Um, please take notice that in accordance to the Governor's Executive Order Number two oh two point one, a public hearing will be held by the Town of Southampton Planning Board on Thursday, November twelfth, twenty twenty at six P M via video conferencing to consider the site plan special exception application entitled Homeland Towers Watermill. Such a project is for the site plan special exception application dropped a hundred-foot tall unipole wireless communication facility and accessory structures on a one point three nine acre parcel approved with a retail furniture store building and a specialty contractor building located in the H B zoning district at ten fifty-four Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Pec number nine hundred dash one oh two dash one dash nineteen. A transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments.
Thanks Claire. Mr. Guardioso, can you give us a very brief overview of this application?
Yes, good evening. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Robert Guardioso, on behalf of Homeland Towers and Verizon Wireless. Uh, this is an application for a wireless telecommunications facility. It's on the back portion of the property adjacent to the Long Island Railroad. Um, railroad lines. Uh, we had originally proposed a much taller tower. Throughout the process, we've uh, changed the design to a unipole design. So all of the antennas are within the pole and not visible. We've lowered the height to one hundred feet. Uh, the, the parcel is in the back portion of the parcel, about forty-one hundred square feet, surrounded by twenty-seven six-foot arborvitae and an eight-foot uh, fence with green vinyl slats. Uh, this is for wireless communications. We did provide extensive documentation, we did numerous visual rendering showing what the facility would look like. Um, in a, in a two-mile study area would be visible in less than fourteen point seven uh, percent of that study area with ninety-two percent of that uh, being undeveloped uh, land. Uh, we submitted an FAA report showing uh, no lighting on the tower. We submitted a report showing the need for the facility uh, for service in the area. No impact on historic properties, uh, no impact on archaeological resources. Also, uh, very importantly, the facility is, is completely compliant with FCC regulations uh, regarding um, uh, radio frequency exposure. We did design the facility for Verizon Wireless, but also for co-location. So that way there would be not a proliferation of towers. In fact, AT&T is already committed uh, to being able to co-locate here. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know you have a long agenda, so I wanted to keep it short. But I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
I think we have someone here to, is Rachel Verno speaking, Claire?
Yes, she's registered, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, Charles, can you invite Rachel in, please? Rachel Verno?
I'm trying to.
Watermill C A C.
Call from Jackie Selk.
Actually, she's coming.
Okay. Hi Rachel, welcome.
Um, hi. Um, obviously, in the interest of time, I did not realize that you had the Stehakki property on uh, the agenda tonight. So um, I'm going to be very brief. Um, I always appreciate the opportunity um, for the Watermill C A C to comment on these type of projects. Um, I also wanted to say that I appreciate that the applicant has um, addressed um, a number of the issues that we proposed um, during the pre-submission conference. Um, unfortunately, concerns that we had um, back in twenty nineteen still remain for us. Um, again, in the interest of time, I'm going to, um, our C A C resubmitted our letter from June twenty nineteen from the pre-submission conference. We had some additional comments that we submitted, I think yesterday, the day before. And um, um, I just want, and I believe that the Halsey family is in the process of putting their letter together. Um, so I hope that the written comment period will stay open for a little bit of time to hear them. They're, they own the piece of farmland behind um, the proposed tower. And um, I just wanted to say, at the end of the report, the applicant says that there will be no significant adverse effects from this project and we respectfully disagree. And I hope that you all have the opportunity to read our letter from twenty nineteen and from um, this week. And um, I'll leave it at that. So I know you have a busy night.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, guys.
And we did receive your letters.
Great, thank you. And I didn't realize, good luck with tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we got the Halsey letter too.
Oh, you did, okay, great. Thank you.
It looks like Ray Vergati wants to speak.
So Ray is actually with Homeland Tower.
Okay, great, so you're all set with that.
Okay, so if there's.
I would just give it an opportunity to see if there's any hands raised for a minute. Because we did receive a couple more letters, I think the board got. I just want to make sure that we don't miss them. So just raise your hand if you have, uh, or just notice us if you want to speak on this. Okay. I don't see anything.
Nope. Okay, thanks Rachel and this Watermill C A C. Uh, Robert, do you um, need to say anything or?
No, I, I, you know, I think we did try and, you know, we looked at twenty-five different alternative sites. We lowered the height of the pole forty feet. Uh, we really did work hard on this and, and I think the visuals do, you know, do show that, uh, that it does have a very minimal impact. But we'd be happy to take a look at the letter and, and, you know, add any additional comments on reviewing it.
That'd be good. Uh, no comments from the board. If not, we close with a thirty-day written comment period. I need a motion.
Motion.
By Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
One.
Pose, extension, six in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much. Good luck this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Welcome Christine.
Christine.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Thomas Ars Stehakki Living Trust, um, one two oh five, Major's Path. We have notice.
Madam Chair, all the postings have been properly done.
Great. Um. Okay, so. We have here. Trick Lawrence and Dave Gil Martin.
I think they represent the applicants, yes. And then I'll, I'll read.
You can go ahead, Claire, and read.
Okay. Please take notice in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number two oh two point one, a pre-submission conference will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, November twelfth, twenty twenty at six P M via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission application entitled uh, twelve oh five Major's Path. The site plan application proposes a change from one non-conforming use to another, to it from a pre-existing non-conforming use to, for the receipt of natural organic waste, trees, brush, dumps, leaves, and other cleaning debris, clearing debris, to a hundred and twenty unit multifamily condominium use with a two-story clubhouse and recreational area on a twenty point one acre parcel situated in the C, the R sixty zoning district located at twelve oh five Major's Path in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Pec number nine hundred dash seventy-eight dash one dash twenty point one. A transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments.
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder again to all of the people who are here to speak to this Stehakki application. We have forty-four people listed here. And um, so I'm going to have to limit, as we do when we have a crowd, to about a three-minute comment period. And I really ask you to adhere to that, if you will. And if someone before you has spoken um, and repeating, you're going to repeat what they said, please don't. You, you could send us letters um, and um, and we'll go from there. Okay, so. And we have a brief overview from Trick, are you going to do that?
Uh, yes, David Gil Martin is going to start. And uh, I will go through a couple of um, images uh, just to kind of orient you on the project and fill in the public as far as what's being proposed.
Do you want to share a screen?
Yeah, that'd be great, Claire, thank you. Okay. Dave Gil Martin, you're there, right? Was Dave uh, Gil Martin led into the meeting?
Working on it.
Okay. That Charles, hi. I'm also joined tonight with, uh, by Tom Dixon. He's a professional engineer at Nelson and Pope. And he prepared the conceptual plans. And uh, this, this is actually quite good. We understand there's a lot of people and we'll move through it as quickly as we can.
Hi Dave.
Hi, hi Charles, can you also let in David Berman? Who's the principal of Engel Berman? Um, and Scott Middleton, who is the attorney for the property owner? And Jake Turner, who's also with Engel Berman?
Okay, can you start Doug? You're going to start, David?
Sure, um, I'll start. The, just, um, again, David Berman, who you're letting in, is the principal of Engel Berman. Uh, Scott Middleton is the attorney from um, for Mr. Stehakki and Jake Turner, who led in is a, is an attorney with Engel Berman. Um, and between us, we should be able to answer uh, any of the questions that you have. Um, as Claire stated.
Uh, just one second, Charles, also Tom, Tom Dixon.
No problem.
Thanks very much. David, I'm going to go to the next.
Yep, that's fine. So this is a, a twenty-plus acre lot that's located with accesses both off a Major's Path and Straight Path. It is the site of the former North Sea landfill, which was operated by the Town of Southampton and owned by the village. It was operated between approximately nineteen thirty-eight until nineteen sixty-three, uh, when it moved across the street and a little to the east. The property today is owned by the Thomas Stehakki Living Trust and it operates in organic receiving, organic material receiving use on it. And it has a pre-existing non-conforming certificate of. And it has a pre-existing non-conforming certificate of occupancy that allows that use. We have made an application to the zoning board of appeals to convert that use to a multifamily use. Multifamily use involves 120 units. It is over 22 buildings. There is a proposed two-story clubhouse with amenities. There's a six-plus-or-minus acre reserve, and the property will be serviced by an onsite wastewater treatment plant. So the application was made to the zoning board under 33167B3 that allows a non-conforming use to be converted to another non-conforming use if the change is beneficial to the neighborhood. We submit that this change is beneficial in two regards, in two important regards. One, that the current use, which has created significant issues within the neighborhood based on the amount of complaints made to code enforcement, the town police, and to the town, that use will be removed. And secondarily, and very important to the town government itself, is that the current landfill, which still exists on the property, will be remediated to DEC guidelines. The site was previously zoned each industrial, which permitted the operation of the dump. And again, that was the mid-1930s to 1963. Again, the, the waste that was taken in during that period of time still exists and is buried on-site. Site was never remediated. The basis of our application is the CO that was issued by the building department. That, that certificate of occupancy was challenged by a group of neighbors, and it was upheld earlier this year, June 18, 2020. We met with the planning staff in September of 2020 and suggested that we have this pre-submission conference and proceed with the site plan application. I would also remind the board that you've been designated as lead agency under SECRE, so you will be responsible for the secret review on this. I, I think another important point before I turn the presentation over to Chick is that you understand the entity that is making this application as a contract vendee. It's Engel Berman. They are a Long Island-based full-service real estate firm, and they are fully capable of remediating the site and constructing the project. If you see on the screen there, we've provided a number of the developments that Engel Berman have done and would direct you to their website if you have any questions about the quality of their work or their ability to, to deliver this project if and when it is approved. So with that, I will turn it over to Chick, who will talk about the site plan particulars. But thank you.
Thank you, David. And Jackie, I heard your instructions at the beginning. So for the record, my name is Chick Voorhees of Nelson Pope &amp; Voorhees, and our address is 70 Maxis Road in Melville. As I told Tom Dixon, it's different, same address. But we're keeping this, well, I'll, I'll go through the basics of the project. As David said, it, it's a 120-unit multifamily condominium project. There are 22 buildings. They're 32 feet tall. Two and three units per building, as you can see on the site plan, based on the footprints. There is new internal roadways and driveways for each unit. There's a two-story clubhouse. That's in the corner of the property with innocent pickleball courts, outdoor pool, and a putting green. There are garages for the units. There's 147, 49 off-street parking stalls and 289 parking stalls provided. That is consistent with code requirements. There's also an emergency access, which is located here to Majors Path. There's new landscaping that will include green infrastructure, green gardens. There's open space area on the south part of the site, and this is the area that was previously filled that will be remediated. But we would not be proposing to put any residential units in that location. So that's the open space on the south part of the site. And the wastewater plant is in the southernmost portion of the property, right at this location next to the row. You can see the essence of the architecture here. They're very attractive buildings with a traditional feel. And as David said, Engel Berman is well-qualified to construct this type of project. This is just an enlargement of the site plan that was at small scale. Here's the main access road. There's a loop road. Each of these beautiful buildings will be located on the perimeter as well as on the interior. This is the recreation area. Area, the open space, and the treatment plant. This shows both the front and back of the units, so that you get a sense that they are attractive, front, back, and sides, and also of high quality. And the DEC matters are of great importance, and our firm had prepared a Phase 1 environmental site assessment. Those are the documents that are usually used for lending purposes to determine if there are recognized conditions on a property. Based on that, we did note the presence of the landfill. There was limited Phase 2 work done under a work plan that was approved by the DEC. In other words, once this property was brought to our attention based on prior work, as well as the work we did, the DEC asked us to conduct additional sampling and monitoring on the property that includes spill sampling, groundwater sampling, as well as soil gas sampling, which is recently a, a big issue, or can be, depending on the nature of deposits in the environment. And so that work plan was approved by DEC on March 5, 2019. We met with the DEC before that, as well as for a pre-sampling conference in July of 2020. They were present on the site when sampling was done. And we completed a Phase 2 ESA environmental site assessment on September 22. The oversight at the time. Sampling to date has been extensive, and there's been extensive communication with DEC. The property does require remediation. This is a costly and time-consuming process that we certainly would like to embark on. It is dependent on the land use proposal in order for this to occur. But there are no factors that were identified that would hinder the residential use of the property. We expect either a removal or a capping scenario. And as I said, the waste area would be avoided, and the DEC would not have any issues with us using the property. So I will add that the state has been on-site extensively, and there's been discussion of organic material that's received on the property. The state is fully aware of this. They have found no violations. And I know that the owner's representative is here as well, if there are any questions on that. Getting very close to the end, we would just like to let you know that we fully expect that this will be reviewed in detail under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. That would, we'd be at the board and staff. Expect a full environmental review, and that would include a traffic study, fiscal and economic assessment, certainly an analysis of land use, zoning, comprehensive plans, conformity to those, a full assessment of natural resources, and a full assessment of human resources. And the applicant would be prepared to do that. Just in closing, we thank you for the opportunity to present the project at this pre-submission conference. We look for your, forward to your input, as well as that of the public, and we'll wrap up our presentation at this time.
Thank you, Chick and, and David. Are there any? Can, can that be taken off the, share your screen? Thanks.
Yes, we'll give it over to Claire. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Any specific questions? Okay, so
Sorry, Jackie, I couldn't get unmuted. Can I ask one?
Yeah, sure.
I guess it would go to Chick. Chick, is there a point where you get through the remediation process? And I, I mean, if, if you find that the site can't be remediated, I mean, is that even a possibility? That it is so bad somewhere underneath that area that it might forestall the project?
Phil, thank you for the question. We have sufficient data and have had sufficient communication with DEC that I can tell you very firmly that that would not happen. The deposits are elevated in terms of contaminants, but we're not accessing. There's one small area, a little hot spot, where we know that material would need to be removed from the site. We know that there are no organic vapors, based on soil vapor sampling and monitoring. We also know the groundwater.
I'm having problems, Chick. I'm really having problems hearing you and understanding. And it's so important to hear what you're saying. Could you either fix your mic and restart Phil's question? Because it was totally gobbled. I don't know if anybody else was having the same.
Absolutely the same. Thank you, Robin.
Okay.
And it's too important.
This is all technology that
Whatever you do, better.
Thank you.
Hey, I only have a certain amount of control. Do my best. So, Phil, your question was, would there be a case where the contamination would be so great that we would not be able to develop the property? We have soil gas sampling. There are no organic vapors. We would not, in this case, even need something like vapor barriers. We have groundwater sampling that finds that upgradient and downgradient wells are very similar and not excessive contamination in the groundwater. We sampled the organic processing area and found that the elevate, that there were not significantly elevated levels of contaminants in that area. And there is extensive sampling of the waste material that is on-site. It is mostly metals. It is mostly related to ash. There is one hotspot area where material would have to be removed from the site. And the balance of it, we believe, and the DEC has led us to believe, and we've done it on other similar sites where capping would effectively isolate the material, both from an exposure standpoint, as well as from the standpoint of precipitating leaching through, which, which is occurring now. Basically, we have sufficient information for me to answer your question. We would not expect any problem with developing the property.
Thank you.
Quick, quick follow-up question, Chick. Was this property ever classified as a superfund site?
Not to my knowledge. I did not see it in any records. It did not come up in our Phase 1 site assessment.
Okay, thank you. If, if there are no other questions on the board, I think we need to get into hearing people who have come. We have 44 people. I don't know if everyone is going to speak. Again, please keep your comments brief. You're going to have plenty of time to submit them. We probably will leave the hearing open because there are just so many people, and there's such strong interest. So is there an order, Charles, that you are calling people in?
I just see a few hands.
Okay, I see Anthony Dreyer here on the screen, so why don't we start with Mr. Dreyer? Again, give us your name, please, and
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I will keep it brief. My name is Anthony Dreyer. I live at 8 Spinnaker Way. I want to thank the board for their time and attention to this matter. It's critically important for all of us to make our homes in this area. As you can see by the number of people who've joined and who've written to the board, there's a tremendous amount of concern and, quite frankly, outrage among those of us who live here, and for good reason. The proposal is unprecedented. It's unprecedented for the town as a whole and for a quiet neighborhood, far from being beneficial to this neighborhood. It would destroy the character. As we laid out in the letter, and I won't repeat it, there are so many concerns about this development. It's hard to figure out where to start. You have the size and scope, 120 units, easily double the size of any development in Southampton, let alone in a residential neighborhood like this. Six times as many homes as we have along the neighboring streets. Dense, packed structures, literally right in our backyard. The property line setback is supposed to be 100 feet. They have these homes jam-packed 40 feet from our backyards. It's, it's outrageous. And the reason for that is most of the waste is not being carted away. It's being left there. And so they have to jam these homes back against our property line, against the homes of people who've lived here for 10, 15, 20 years. Could you imagine looking at your kitchen or playing with your kids or grandkids? Really, a stone's throw from a housing complex, nobody would want that. Nobody in their right mind, except people making money off this project, would think it's beneficial. It's a monstrosity. There's a rec center, a community pool, a putting green, a tennis court, literally right in our backyards. It's outrageous. I'll leave with this. New York zoning laws are in place for an important reason. The highest court in the Toys R Us case recognized communities are best served when zoning laws are adhered to as closely as possible, that non-conforming uses should be disfavored and phased out. This is not remotely phasing out a non-conforming use. It's taking it and putting it on steroids. All it does is make a windfall for the developer. And Mr. Stehakki, none of whom live in this community, none of whom pay taxes in this community. And that's why no one in this community supports the project, why no one here, who lives here, who pays taxes, thinks this is beneficial. Those along the property line oppose it, those adjacent oppose it, those on the surrounding blocks oppose it. The community center, who I, I hope you'll hear from tonight, oppose it. We could not have spoken any clearer on this issue. I hope the board will follow the law, will follow common sense, will listen to the people who actually live in this neighborhood, who know best about what is best for their neighborhood. And that will lead you to deny this application. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Who is next, please? Someone up on the screen. Anthony?
Thank you very much. My name is Cecilia Gardner. I live at 40 Old Fish Cove Road. Have been there for about 10 years. The size of this project with 130 units is shocking to me. It is already a rather crowded residential area with many of the homes on a third of an acre or a half of an acre. There is already a multi-unit dwelling project on Majors Path in the neighborhood. We already suffer on Straight Path from traffic getting, avoiding Neuyac Road. We already suffer with traffic on my road, Old Fish Cove Road, with traffic avoiding Neuyac. The noise that is represented by additional units like this in terms of traffic, leaf blowers, lawn mowers, motorcycles, trucks, cars, it would be an outrageous change of the neighborhood. Further, given the all rather, already rather dense population of this particular area of North Sea, by your estimations, there are at least three, nearly 300 additional parking spots, which means 300 additional cars in a residential neighborhood. And then if you add to that people's guests and service people coming to the area, the increase in traffic would be appalling, and no one who bought in the area anticipated any of this, given the unprecedented nature of the project. So I would ask you to substantially consider the serious alteration that this project would, would create to residents like myself, who've been there for many, many years, and, and it never anticipated a change like this.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Right. Is there Stephanie McNamara here or speaking to this application?
She's on, on the screen, but she's muted.
There you go. Can, can you unmute? Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you very much. Stephanie McNamara, 231 Neuyac Road.
I'm the Chair of the North Sea Citizens Advisory Committee. And we submitted a letter to you back on August fifteenth, objecting to this. Lengthy letter stating all of the reasons, many of which have already been mentioned this evening. So I won't take the time to go through it, but I am resubmitting that letter to you once again so that you have it in writing. But, you know, from our point of view as the North Sea C A C and from all the citizens that live in this area that have come to us, this is a completely unacceptable proposal for this neighborhood. It's outrageous to think that one hundred and twenty condominiums could go into this quiet neighborhood. As far as someone you mentioned before about it being a superfund site, it was not a superfund site. And the reason for that is because the site was already closed down when they opened the landfill across the street. So it didn't become a superfund site because at that time, superfund sites were not, were not happening. It's explained in more detail on the letter that I will forward to you again. But you do have that letter on record from last August when you first had, when we first, this was first brought to your attention. So we strongly object to changing the nonconforming use. And yes, there are issues with what Mr. Stehakie has been doing there in the neighborhood over the years. And we've tried to get the town to take care of those issues and to address it. It hasn't happened, but that doesn't make one hundred and twenty condos less an impact on our neighborhood than what's happening there right now. So just to be clear, this is completely unacceptable to the neighborhood. So thank you for your time. I won't take up anymore. I know there's a lot of other people who would like to speak this evening, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Jacob Turner, are you here to speak? No. Raymond Claire?
Yes, I am here. How are you tonight?
Fine, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'll be as quick as I can. These big developments should be done in person, even though we might have to wait to do them outside in the spring. That's number one. Number two, everybody knows the name Sand Land. When they were trying to close it, the state of D E C got involved and found mulching facilities on Long Island polluted and new rules were put into place. Sand Land shut down, stopped the mulching, causing the North Sea landfill to enlarge the mulching and store acres of mulch in piles. Has the board read the health hazards of mulching facilities and the new D E C rules for Long Island? North Sea, is North Sea landfill up to date? The Stehakie property is across the street from the landfill. If a mulching facility polluted in Noiac, it does in North Sea. There should be nothing put there except plants. As the area expands, the mulch piles are going to expand. And the facility will only get bigger. You don't need any more people or trucks around the area. The North Sea landfill has been a problem for over forty years. There have been too many homes, playgrounds built around it. The way we deal with waste changes constantly, nobody wants the recyclables anymore. How is that going to change the landfill area? Number three. Where are we going to put another two hundred and forty cars in this area? In no COVID times, you can't get out of North Sea certain times of the day. Are you going to overpass North Sea Road and thirty nine, bridge Tucker Hall Road, put a clover leaf lunch in a cock golf course to move traffic and limit pollution? Number four, has the town requested foiled sales tax records for the Stehakie property from nineteen sixty five to present to show continuous business activity? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see two people, but I don't know your names. Are you here to speak for this today? You're muted. Can you unmute yourself? Lower left hand corner. There you go.
Hi, I'm Marilyn and Alan Zaretsky, two Spinnaker Way. We've submitted letters to the planning board. I won't repeat the, all the questions about traffic and just trying to get out of Mary's Lane onto North Sea Road. We've spoken earlier about water pressure is a problem here, and you add that many homes, there'll be a problem with that. My main question, though, is I sat in on the virtual forums that the town began on July twenty first about redoing an overall housing plan for the town. And we, they had virtual public forums for all villages in the town. They said that your overall housing plan has to be revised because it hasn't been revised since nineteen ninety nine. Wouldn't you think a moratorium should be placed on projects of this size until all the results you're paying, we're paying an up island firm from White Plains to do an extensive study? In the meantime, you're planning to put something in that'll tip a balance that wasn't even discussed at the public forum. You're, the town is the one running this. To me, it just would make sense to have a moratorium on this type of building until an entire plan is made for the town as where appropriate housing should be built, what size it should be, which you'd be geared toward, and what the cost should be. That was what we were told at the public forum. That's why we spent time at that public forum. And your own personnel spent an awful lot of time speaking to people for, for weeks, six or seven weeks of input. Where is the report? It says we need one hundred and twenty condos in North Sea.
Okay. Thanks very much. Someone up next to speak? Charles?
I see Robert Simonson.
Mr. Simonson? You're, we can't hear you. Do you have your audio on? No.
Turn your audio up. Just turn the volume up. Nope. Volume up. You're unmuted, so it's gotta be a volume.
Can you give him some directions, Charles?
He may not have speakers on his computer that he's using.
I have no idea what he has. It's, it's gotta be a volume.
Okay, can you put, Mr. Simonson, put your comments in a letter and send them to us, okay? We will read them and you'll have time to do that. Sorry about the audio. Technology can be an enemy. All right, we're moving on to. Someone else, Charles?
I'm checking right now.
See one hand up for Jennifer Brockhouse.
Good morning. Am I on?
You are. Yes, please.
Okay, my name is Carol Corker. I live at twelve Spinnaker Way. I just, I'm just gonna read something real quick and we'll go from there. When we were looking for a home, we looked from Southampton to East Hampton, and we found nothing that compares to our community here. We fell in love and even spent a little more than our budget allowed. The peacefulness, calm and quiet is what makes this area what it is. If we cannot convince you, then come visit. Come drive around our neighborhood. Walk a little. Come to our backyards and see what we mean. Come at nighttime and watch for shooting stars and the constellations. These things would be lost due to the lighting of this development and the traffic that would ensue. You'll immediately see that this huge project does not belong here. It is very wrong. It sends me that this project could even possibly happen. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Jennifer Brockhouse? Jennifer Brockhouse? Yes, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay. Okay.
Are we unmuted?
Yes.
We can hear you.
All right, good. I just want to say something quick, I guess. I live at eighty nine Straight Path, right across the street here. We've been here about twenty five years. And how the entrance is gonna be on Straight Path? Straight Path, Major's Path will be much more accessible than Straight Path. It just seems they want to stuff everything to one side of the development, so they have to deal with the tainted land. And they're also putting the entrance and exit on straight, on a straight path. It doesn't make any sense to me. And the whole process doesn't make sense to me as far as the condos, one hundred and twenty condos, two hundred and forty cars, plus services, plus guests. It just, it's too much in a tiny little area. And it's wrong. You know, that's all I kind of want to say. And I highly disagree, and we've been here for a long time, and a lot of people were, you know, moved out here for the quietness of the area, not expecting to be near like this. And it's a travesty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Brockhouse. Hi.
Hi.
I moved out here from Nassau County to not live in Nassau County. And living across the street from two hundred and forty condos is like living in Nassau County. Sixty condos, ten condos, whatever how many condos. I didn't buy my house twenty five years ago to live across the street from condos. It's not the essence of our neighborhood. And we don't agree, obviously. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much. Who else is there, Charles?
I have no other hands.
No other hands?
A lot of people with no hands.
Lot of people with no hands. No one in the chat rooms here on the side.
No one raising their hands.
Okay. A further questions from the board? Okay, we are going to leave this hearing open. There are too many people, too many letters still coming in. I hear someone speaking.
There's a Bobby Michael.
Bobby Michael Marion?
Hi, forgive, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Hi.
About to close.
I share many of the same sentiments said before, so to keep it short. I apologize for my appearance. My husband happens to actually be in the hospital right now. We are at eleven sixty five Major's Path. Our home is sandwiched between where they proposed to put the opening, the, you know, the driveway into this development. And then on the other side, I guess, some treatment plant, which would be adjacent to our backyard where we have a small child. I can't tell you how many times I have seen from the traffic already and tried to explain to my three year old why there are dead deer and turkey on the road. It's very dangerous. He's, you know, he doesn't understand why there's a rec center across the street, but I won't allow him to walk to it. And I drive my car two hundred feet because it's just simply too dangerous on the road with the traffic that already. My husband and I also spent over our budget about five years ago to obtain this home to get some relief for the, the, the health challenges we have for him. So this would be devastating to have to deal with her sensory issues, for so many other things. It's just such a large development in a place that already has some unique issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see someone else here. Do you wish to speak? Charles, I don't know who this person is, and she's muted.
Phyllis.
Phyllis Dixon?
Yes, I would like to speak. I live at twenty two Spinnaker Way. I am also a real estate agent and I sold homes on this land, on this street. Because when I bought in two thousand and one from our longtime friend, guaranteed us that this was a closed property and that we were buying adjacent to a tree farm, which sounded wonderful. And then as a real estate agent, I promoted our, our area, Oak Neck Lane and Spinnaker, because I love living here. And it was zoned as a tree farm and people bought in good faith. But I've heard that it is, this was always tolerated. The code enforcement said the stink was not an issue, that there was no substance. We live against what we thought was a tree farm. In nineteen, in two thousand and fourteen, Linda Kuzuzian had it in proper, in contract when Anthony bought his home. And I heard her talking about how wonderful it would be because it's zoned.
What we thought was a tree farm.
What it was, and we went to court over that. But now it was never appropriated as a tree farm. And, and it was in contract for twelve homes. They were applying for sixteen. The real estate agent told me that her developer asked for sixty condos and the town told her that they would never approve that. So he was looking for twelve to sixteen homes, which all of us would welcome because that's what we expected would be agreeable to the neighborhood. That, that was in, inappropriate for the other homes, all of which are on a half to an acre abutting this property. We would love that kind of a development or a community fund purchase of this property. Nobody, nobody in the whole area wants one hundred and twenty condos with a two story rec center, pool, tennis courts and squash courts that are basically forty feet off of my neighbor's property. On July fourth, you could have four hundred resident, four hundred and eighty residents, since they're two bedroom condos, with all of their guests sitting basically in your backyard. I'm sorry that you're yawning about that, but you probably don't live here. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Chick or David, would you like to say anything in closing? Because we're going to be leaving the hearing open. And.
Why would we leave the hearing open?
Because there's a lot of public interest. There are letters still coming in.
We, we have a hearing tonight. We're prepared to hear everyone. If not, they have the thirty day written comment period.
No, we're not doing the thirty day written comment period.
I'm sorry?
Believe it, we're going to be leaving it open.
Why would we leave it open? We're here tonight.
We're leaving it open based on the degree of public interest. I think the board is finding that there's a high degree of public interest, community.
But where, where's the public interest? I don't see him here tonight. We're here, right? Everybody's had an opportunity to speak.
There's one other. This is, this, this shows a complete disregard for the community. This is part and parcel of these developers who only care about their money.
No, it's not. It's a fairness issue.
David, please.
Well, there was an interruption of my speaking, so I'm, you know.
We can hold this open because there is public interest. There were, we've never had that many people showing up for a Zoom meeting. And so we.
They were here. They were here. You mentioned it. They had the opportunity to speak. Anybody who wanted an opportunity to speak, spoke.
Some people who might not be here because of COVID, because of a variety of issues.
But, but the, the governor has said, you keep it open for thirty days at the end.
That's for a written comment period.
Was here tonight.
We're not adjourning it.
Shows not to, I would, I mean, everybody prior to this hearing, so there's fifty people, there's a lot of people that are here that are prepared to speak. You know, obviously what was said, was said, and it satisfied everyone because most of them didn't come on to.
There are letters still coming in. There are letters still coming in.
Which, which the thirty. Which, which the thirty-day comment period provided by the governor satisfies.
It doesn't.
It does. The thirty, you have thirty days to put it in. It, it satisfies every other application but this one. That's prejudicial.
We have left, we have left, we have left applications that had a lot of public interest open.
This is standard operating procedure for this size. We've done it dozen, uh, well over a dozen times, two dozen times. We, we're not out of the fault, we're not out of way of doing this. Secondly, a lot of the attendees, maybe this is their first interaction with Zoom with the technology. They may, there, there were obviously problems getting, people getting in, getting sound queued up. So we want to afford those people the opportunity to be heard as well. So this, this, we're, we're not doing anything that's on, that, that's out of the ordinary in a project this size.
Well, then I, then I would request it be in two weeks.
Well, we can. We have a big, uh, public hearing, uh, scoping session.
That's Thanksgiving. We don't have a hearing.
We don't have one Thanksgiving. Right. There's no public hearing.
There's three other people from the public who wish to speak.
Okay, let's hear.
Well, one of them's already spoken before.
There does seem to be one who's speaking for the second time, but, uh,
Lee, Lee Arders?
Hi.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lee Arders. I live at seventy-six Johnson Avenue. That is just off of Straight Path. Today is the first that I've heard of this project. So believe me, the reason that more people have not responded is because they have not, uh, oh, gosh. Sorry about that. There's my video.
We hear you.
Yeah. Um, the reason you haven't heard more is because people haven't heard of this, but believe me, in a week or two, there will be more. I just wanted to point out, um, thank you, Jen, for your very thoughtful comment about coming and walking around our area and what it's all about. Really appreciate that. I just wanted to point out that our neighborhood does carry a somewhat of a burden for the, this whole area of Southampton because we do have the recycling center and that stuff. I do not think that we need another large project like this in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire, did you say there was someone else?
There seemed to be, um, an Emily Demone.
Emily Demone?
Now she's disappearing.
No, disappeared. Oh, she's coming. There we go.
Emily, do you, would you like to speak? You're muted and we don't have video.
Frustrating for, for, for people who want to speak and, and have the technology against them. Charles, can you do anything to unmute her?
Okay, I'm doing what I can.
Oh, wait. Hi, hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I'm sorry. So with all due respect, the reason why I didn't speak was because I was sort of taking it all in, and I, I just found out the scope of this today. So I live next door to Lee at seven, I'm, I'm at sixty-four Johnson Avenue. Lee is my neighbor. I informed him and everybody that I could last night. Just to add to it, this community that I live in, it's called, uh, informally, the President's Community, that all the names are after Presidents. Um, not, we're a semi-private road, which means we don't get plowed. None of our potholes get fixed, so, um, that, it, everybody uses this neighborhood as a cut through, um, during peak hours, and, um, so I assume that would only get worse. And I, I would venture to say that, I know a lot of the people on Spinnaker have spoken. I would venture to say a lot of the people on Straight Path have no idea that this is even happening. Um, I have, um, I, I plan on going door to, you know, putting a mask on and going door to door on foot if I have to. And I'm gonna let everybody know what's going on. This is, um, just getting a little emotional. It's a wonderful community, um, and there's always people walking with baby strollers and dogs. I have three rescue dogs of my own. Um, and I mean, it's, you know, you have to be mindful when you're walking in anywhere out here in the Hamptons. It's not the most friendly, you know, for walkers and bikers. But I, I can't, I just almost can't even imagine that we're having a discussion about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-two unit condo in this neighborhood. It's like, like mind-blowing to me, so. Um, I plan on mobilizing as many people as I can. Jennifer is my neighbor. Phyllis is my neighbor. Cecilia is my neighbor. Um, and I just, I, I'm, I'm horrified, but beyond that, I mean, I don't want to be, you know, overly, um, emotional right now, which I am a little bit. So I thank everybody for their time, and, um, I just also don't, I mean, the, the gentleman was touting all the amenities that this facility is gonna have. I don't know how that does anything for any of us. Um, so thank you very much, everybody, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I did see another name there. Uh, Bolo, Bolo?
Paul Bolo.
Paul Bolo?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
There you are. Yes, good.
Good evening. Thank you for, uh, taking the time to address some of the neighbors to the proposed site for the hundred and twenty units. Uh, I, e-everyone's mentioned, uh, uh, similar issues about the density in the area. So I'd like to talk about some uniqueness of North Sea, since I'm a new resident of the area. I live at forty-three Straight Path down the block. Some unique elements of the area are Fish Cove Pond, uh, that leads out to North Sea Harbor, North Sea Harbor. There are two, uh, North American cedar swamps, which you can discuss with, uh, Marty Shea or any of the environmental people in the town, um, which are, the, the, I think there's a handful of them in North America. Uh, there's one that exists between the President's Streets and Mary's Lane, and then south of Mary's Lane. So there's, there's a lot of, uh, area, there, there's components environmentally in the area that I think are very sensitive. Uh, and then there are elements of this site and the current site of the dump that the, my understanding is that the, the, the current Southampton Town Transfer Station is a superfund site, um, as delineated by the test hole sites that are, that are monitored, um, up and down Major's Path, as well as Great Hill Road, down Fish Cove Road. So those are the orange pipes that have, uh, covers and locks on them where they test the contamination, the plume that exists that runs to Fish Cove. So I, I, I think you have a, 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 an existing element right now of, of contamination over the history of, of the dump, old and new. And that, that's something that carefully has to be weighed when you look at considering a hundred and twenty-unit complex on such a small lot that's basically condensed to fifty percent of the lot. So thank you again for your time and attention, and, uh, look forward to learning more about the project and discussing it at length.
Yeah, thank you. I think that might be it, although there are many people still in the, uh, in the hearing room.
It seems there's another person.
Anan Marate.
Yeah, hi, uh, this is Anan Marate. I'm a resident of Southampton Town, uh, and Village, uh, so I'm not in the neighborhood. Uh, I live at twenty-nine Corrigan Street. Uh, Robin might remember me because she was the seller's lawyer. Um, uh, we spend a lot of time, though, in the neighborhood because my in-laws actually live on Spinnaker. Uh, so my child and their grandchild will be growing up, spending their evenings in the neighborhood, biking, uh, you know.
If so.
Okay, uh, so, you know, a, a, as I understand, the key issue is whether a hundred and twenty condo units are more conforming to R sixty zoning than the current non-conforming use, uh, as a tree farm, uh, which apparently the CO was approved for. And I don't see how anyone could view a hundred and twenty condo units, which, uh, for all the reasons of increasing traffic, of, uh, you know, where they're gonna be putting it, um, you know, the, the setbacks, uh, it, it seems in more violation of, of R sixty zoning than, than more compliant. Um, so I, I don't know, understand how anyone could see that as, as equivalent. Um, and so it seems like this, this, uh, plan is, is just a non-starter. Um, and as a side note, I live on a tiny, non-conforming R forty residential lot. So if there's cause to approve this, perhaps I should apply for a non-conforming multifamily complex on my lot. Uh, I say that in jest, but, but, you know, it seems almost as, as outrageous and ludicrous as, as this plan.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Claire, do you see anything? Anyone?
Yeah, Jennifer Doyle is in the room, and there's at least one more person.
Jennifer Doyle?
Yes, yes, we're here.
Hi, uh, this is Roy Lennox and Jennifer Doyle. We live on six Spinnaker Way. We had sent a comment in, um, uh, to, to register our deep concerns about this, but then when the gentleman brought up trying to imply that just because a lot of people weren't talking, there wasn't a lot of interest, I thought it was important that we actually call in. I'm just gonna basically, uh, reiterate what everybody has said, but just to also say that where we live on six Spinnaker Way, the two-story clubhouse will be forty feet from our property. And I just can't even imagine that. So aside from everything else, we're gonna have a clubhouse looming over us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
One more.
Yes, okay.
Charles.
Charlie Blade? Mr. Blade, go ahead. There you are. Yes, okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I wasn't planning to speak either, but, um, I think, uh, after hearing Mr. Gil Martin and the, uh, the, um, arrogant way that he's presenting this, I think everyone needs to speak up. Um, I, uh, live on, uh, Johnson, uh, which is very close to this area. Uh, and I just wanted, I, I'm not a well-versed in, in planning. This is my first time, um, reading any of the documentation, but my understanding is that, that the, uh, the, the parcel, the property is already not, is already non-conforming, and we're just continuing that and making it, uh, continuing it to be non-conforming. Uh, the way I understand non-conforming means it's not according to code. If, if I understand English well, non-conforming means it's not following code. So, uh, that's the first thing. The second, if anyone knows Straight Path, and I recommend all of you come down, um, to Straight Path. It's about one and a half cars wide as it is. And to back up what Emily's saying, many times there are pedestrians on that road or bicyclists because that's the nature of North Sea. Uh, I've lived in North Sea since nineteen ninety-four. Uh, my biggest concern at the time was, was, uh, and we had well water, was whether the dump would affect that. Uh, and I was sure that it wouldn't. But ever since then, we've just seen constant growth in Southampton. Every time uh, you turn a corner, there's another ten thousand square foot house. It's, 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 uh, it's, uh, it's on, it's on the town to control that. This is just, uh, making matters worse uh, because of the, the concentration of people, the concentration of cars, the concentration of, uh, of buildings. And I, I, I have to say that this is, this is incumbent on this planning board to take note of the impact that this will have environmentally, socially, uh, and financially. Uh, this, this is not what, um, Southampton was supposed to be, uh, this kind of concentration of, of, of property, uh, of buildings. And, and I, I'll echo, having grown up, I was born in Suffolk County, having grown up on Long Island, uh, it's just, uh, outrageous to see what's happening. Uh, the, the Hamptons were meant to be a, um, kind of a, a way to escape that, but here it is coming to our, to our neighborhood and, and into our backyard. So thank you for your time, and, um, there's, there's, there, I'm, I'm with Emily. If, if everyone hears about this, I only heard about this today. So once everyone hears about this, there's has to be, uh, just a, uh, an uproar about it. It's just not right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I see Brenda Miller has her hand up. And then there is Stephanie McNamara, but she spoke already. I don't know what you're, what you like to do.
Let's get people who haven't spoken. Brendan Miller?
Brenda, yes.
Brenda Miller? Brenda Miller, are you there?
Brenda. You can do it.
He has to unmute.
Mute. How's that?
We can hear you.
Okay. Sorry. So, um, Brenda Miller, uh, one twenty Fish Cove Road. And I too speak because of Mr. Gil Martin's comments. Um, I think that this is a larger issue than just North Sea. I think this is a Southampton issue already. I, I grew up here. Um, it, everyone knows the character of Southampton is dramatically changing, especially with COVID and more and more people moving out. My worry is that we already call it the trade parade coming out here. And I think that we need to consider the density of the entire area and not just North Sea. I grew up with the old dumps smelling, uh, terribly. Now we have a non-conforming issue going on there, and now we're gonna change the regulations. So I just, I just, uh, would request that the planning board really consider this as you are, and I totally appreciate your time. Thanks. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Gil Martin, and I don't see Chick anymore. He might be off. Um,
The issues, the issues that were raised tonight are common issues raised in these types of applications. And, and that's why we have an environmental review. Environmental review here, as Chick outlined, some of the issues that would be discussed are the exact issues that the community is raising here. So, um, I, I think, let's get to it. You know, why are we waiting? Let's get an answer one way or the other. Where we're going on this, keeping it open. I, I don't, I can't think of with my vivid imagination any of additional issues that could be brought up. I think the thirty-day comment period is sufficient, uh, to get all the issues out. You'll have them. We'll get, you know, we're at the pre-submission. This is gonna be heard, you know, how, how many times more, many times more. We're gonna have public hearings. We're gonna have review of the information that's submitted, uh, by us as the applicant. So to, to delay it doesn't seem to serve any useful purpose. Let's get to the comments that were made, and let's analyze them.
Um, there is, there are additional voices that need to be heard. I realize and appreciate the fact that you want to expedite it and move it along. But we also want, the point of the public hearing is for the public to speak. That's the whole point of it.
This is a big question.
By planning board operation. Now, we do have it, Mr. Jacob, you, are you shaking your head? Can I just ask you? Uh, never mind. Um, we have a calendar issue because of the holidays. Next week, there is no, the next, uh, planning board, there's no public hearing. It's Thanksgiving. December tenth is a scoping evening session that will be packed and dedicated to that. The following week, there is no public hearing. These are holidays that we have nothing to do with in our calendar. So the first public hearing that you could have is, what was it, January fourteenth? Yeah. So also we're looking.
That's two months away.
Well.
Incredibly prejudicial. Then, then special session.
It's Thanksgiving and Christmas prejudicial. Counsel, maybe you can weigh in on this.
This, this is, we're here tonight for a public hearing. The public has obviously had an option and their option to speak. They now could have a thirty-day written comment period. You cite all of this interest, but, you know, certainly there was interest demonstrated tonight, but I don't know what this other interest that you're identifying that you want to accommodate, but we're here.
Other people in the community.
We're, we're here. We got a hearing tonight.
David, there's, I, I appreciate the point that you're trying to make. However, there is nothing in the code that would prevent the, the planning board from being able to adjourn it, number one. Number two, you know that there's a lot of interest, and people are having issues, some of them trying to get in. Um, I can appreciate that you're frustrated by the fact that because of calendaring and scheduling, it does push it out a little bit far. But having said that, you know, it really shouldn't, that doesn't work to stifle people's ability to weigh in on this, so.
Okay, so then schedule, schedule a, a special hearing for it on another date sooner. We're ready to come.
Well, that's entirely up to the chair.
Yeah, I don't know that we can actually do that, so.
You can. You've done it, you've done it many, many, many times before, the scheduled special. You scheduled special hearings for, for applications, and I think it's a fairness issue.
We could schedule it for the seventh. Six P.
January seventh, January?
No, no, um, January seventh.
January seventh.
Is that ZBA? Is that a ZBA slot?
It is.
Oh, is that ZBA?
Yeah.
You could have a simultaneous.
No, we can't.
Not with Charles. We, we need our Charles.
Fourteen is closed.
Not with Charles.
That's why I'm getting out of the ordinary here, David. This is, this is standard.
A two, a two and a half month delay in a public hearing is.
All the timing is bad.
My experience.
It's because of the holidays. It's not.
The, the board could schedule a special hearing for this. If there's that much outside interest, then schedule a special hearing for it.
We run into conflicts with the ZBA. We can only.
Don't do it on a Thursday. Pick, pick a date. We'll be here.
We can't, we can't conflict with the ZBA.
But then pick a different.
I was saying to pick a different day, which is, which is up to you. You might want to consider it only if, for the fact that there may be a lot of people and you may want to have it on a day when it's by itself, but that's entirely within the board's discretion to choose to do that or not. Not, you, I believe you can pick any day you want, as long as it's advertised properly and people know of it and then you have, but you, the problem becomes if you don't know for sure that that's a clear day, you might run into conflict with either other boards or, you know, as Clara stated, Charles may not be available. Um, and so you might, you know, you don't want to give a date that you're not certain of right now, because that's gonna be the adjourned date that everybody's gonna think it happens and you don't want any more conflict into adjourned again.
Claire, do we have, can we look ahead at the calendar?
Um, we can. I would, I would not suggest a Wednesday or a Thursday. Um.
Don't, you need a minimum of ten days for the paper, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, it, you've already, you've already noticed it. So tonight, if you adjourn it to another date, you don't need to, to re-mail or re-advertise. But that said, we're willing to re-advertise and re-mail to another date if that, if that's.
Mail. You didn't mail, but the posting is required, e- even for an adjournment. Um.
I would do, if you're gonna do that, I would do a minimum of two weeks, minimum. You, you really need to go out a little bit. You gotta give a little leeway. If you want a date in December, I would think that that was reasonable, um, if, if you wanted to accommodate a special meeting. But again, that's entirely within the board's discretion.
About Tuesday, the eighth, December eighth.
I don't know if that's a town board.
Board.
Oh, that's town board.
Definitely town board.
What, is it an evening or a day meeting for the town board?
First meetings are day meetings.
So we can do it in the evening?
You could do a six o'clock on the eighth.
Six P M on the eighth?
Yeah.
But it, it wouldn't get in the paper. Is there a Thanksgiving paper? I'm gonna have to ask.
Well, we're talking about January, so you've got plenty of time.
Between the eighth and the fourteenth, is there, is there six days?
It's a month and six days. You're talking about January, I believe.
No, no, or December.
Right, but the original, you originally.
January. Dennis, we're talking January.
We're talking January, aren't we?
No, we're talking.
We're talking December.
December eighth?
No, you can't do, you can't do, I wouldn't, no, you can't. I would not suggest doing that because the town board meets on that day.
But during the day, during the day.
You don't know what happens there. Today, they had a meeting.
They might run over.
Meetings that went very long.
What about the fifteenth, then?
Of what month, please?
December, I'm sorry, December fifteenth. It's a Tuesday.
I think that's possible.
Six P M. Do we have noticing? Can we get noticing?
Have to get into the future.
The meeting will have to be specially noticed.
And reason for pushing it back to that date, the urgency, I understand the urgency of the board, okay? Looking to make sure that everyone in the public has a voice, but it's not a delaying tactic. It's a tactic for transparency and for people to have a right to speak. Maybe perhaps Mr. Gil Martin could give us the opposite side, exactly why the, having it in January would cause his, his prejudice to his client, except for time.
December fifteenth is a month away. It's certainly time enough for everybody to get organized that wasn't able to get here today, and there's a fairness to the applicant to move the process along. January fourteenth or twenty-eighth, whatever day that is, is two plus months away. So that's, that's the reason.
Yeah, believe me, we're, we're squeezed at the other end, having to get reports and applications written before Christmas. So.
This, this is just the public hearing that you're having on the fifteenth.
David, I'm assuming you're also going to be consenting to the continued adjournment of the secret process.
Yes.
The fifteenth is possible. We can put it in the paper for the third.
For the fifteenth at six?
Fifteenth at six.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we all agreed with that? The fifteenth at six, there'll be.
Are you available, Charles? I just want to make sure.
Is the planning board people, are the, is the planning board available? Dennis?
They were available.
Robin?
Yeah, we need them.
Gloria?
Are you available, Chrissy?
Christine, you're available. Thank you. So.
Did we hear from Charles?
No. Charles?
Yeah, no.
Are you available on the fifteenth? Okay, you're here?
Yes. Yes, we could have a get from Charles.
Charles never leaves the Zoom room. Okay, so we are adjourning the, uh, public hearing, second public hearing to, um, December fifteenth at six P M. So can I have a motion? Dennis, second? Can I have a second on this motion? Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Six and, I don't see Blaney, so six in favor, one absent.
Oh, he's not there.
Yeah. Six in favor, one absent. Um, okay, so you're adjourned till December fifteenth?
Other than, uh, Christine, what are the noticing? Just, just so we on the same page?
I'll take care of that with the planning board secretary. Um, I know with the town board, I think it's like a twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround time for a special meeting. Obviously, we want to get it in as soon as possible because a lot of people have been notified now that that's the date that we're going to use, so we'll work on that internally. We'll get that straightened out.
Do they have to do a mailing to the certified mailing?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask them to do everything over again.
No certified mailing with a pre-submission.
The posting.
It's just a posting.
Just posting?
Yes.
It's like they did for this one.
Just.
Okay.
It's my dog.
And it sounds vicious. And there'll be something up on the town website about that special meeting, in case people go.
Yes, we'll put it as an agenda item.
There is a landmarks board that evening, but I can get someone else to do it, so.
Oh, thank you, Charles.
Thanks, Charles.
You're welcome.
Okay, so could I have a motion? Thank you very much, David and your group, and.
Thank you.
December fifteenth.
December fifteenth.
At six o'clock.
Pizza for sixties on you, David.
Got it.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
And by Dennis, second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.